Call the council meeting to order, please be seated. All right, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on April the 10th? Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carry. All right, our first order of business tonight is a presentation to the council in regard to the impact of Kinder Morgan's proposed pipeline routing plan. And we have Deepak Duttani here with us this evening to give us that briefing. Mr. Duttani, if you would, please.
Good evening, your worship, and members of council. In the presentation today, I'll go over the following areas: background, Kinder Morgan's proposed pipeline routing plan, staff comments on the proposed pipeline alignment in Burnaby, and report recommendations. With the background, on November 29, 2016, the federal governor and council granted approval for Kinder Morgan Trans Mountain Expansion Project and directed the National Energy Board to issue a certificate of public convenience and necessity with conditions for the project. The project components as approved include the following: 980 kilometers of new pipeline, 193 kilometers of reactivated pipeline, 12 new pump stations, 19 new storage tanks to existing terminals. I would note that 13 of these would be new tanks plus one replacement tanks in Burnaby, and an expansion of three new tanker berths at Westridge Marine Terminal. Now, the city remains opposed to the project, and it is challenging the federal governor and council decision in the federal courts. It also said this time that Kinder Morgan's Expansion Project at the terminus point in Burnaby has four components, namely: Burnaby Terminal, Westridge Marine Terminal, the linear pipeline corridor, and the tunnel connecting Kinder Morgan terminals via Burnaby Mountain Conservation Area. I'll briefly touch on the first two components and focus the remaining time on the last two components. Firstly, the Burnaby Terminal Facility. The site is located at 7185 Shelmont Street. It is a 189-acre site, and currently has 13 tanks ranging in size from 125,000 barrels to 130,000 barrels, with a storage capacity of 1.7 million barrels. With the project, there will now be doubling of the storage tanks to 26 tanks at the terminal. The 14 new tanks shown in yellow, which includes one replacement tank circled in red, will range in size from 165,000 to 335,000 barrels, resulting in tripling of storage capacity to 5.3 million barrels. This in an urban area surrounded by residents, schools, and parks. In addition, there will now be a tunnel portal on the northwest area of the terminal. A large number of trees will be removed, and open tributaries will largely be piped to accommodate for the expansion. The Westridge Marine Terminal. The facility is located at 7065 Beavie Drive and is a 15-acre site. With the project, this facility will now have its shoreline extended, and there'll be three new tanker berths built. In addition, there will now be a tunnel portal added to the northeast portion of the site. Approximately, you see where the forested area is and between the large green tank and a small green tank is about the area where the portal will be located. As a result of the expansion, there'll be almost sevenfold increase per month in tanker traffic through Burrard Inlet, from the current five tankers a month to 34 tankers a month. Now for Kinder Morgan's proposed pipeline routing plan. On March 3, 2017, Kinder Morgan filed its Plan Profile and Book of Reference, also known as PBBOR, with the NEB as a part of its detailed pipeline routing approval process. There's a 30-day time limit starting from the date a landowner receives the notice from Kinder Morgan to submit statement of opposition to the NEB. The city was served with the notices for city-owned lands on April 6, 2017. I might say at this point that adjacent landlords, leaseholders, or occupants do not receive a direct notice from Kinder Morgan. However, these persons have 30 days from the last publication of the notice in the local newspaper to submit their statements of opposition to the National Energy Board. A bit about the city's Public Information and Awareness Program. Staff delivered letters to residents and businesses adjacent to the proposed pipeline routing alignment to raise awareness regarding the proposed alignment's response and timelines. The city website was also updated with applicable details. In addition, the city placed a full-page ad in Burnaby Now and Singtown newspapers informing the residents of the same. And we have received quite a few positive responses from residents calling and thanking the staff for informing them regarding the matter. Staff review of the proposed pipeline alignment in Burnaby. Some general comments first before I get into specifics. The existing pipeline alignment is shown in blue, and is proposed to be about 10 meters wide. Sorry, the proposed 10-meter-wide pipeline easement is shown in the red, so the blue is the existing, the red is the proposed 10-meter easement. Based on the overview map, it is pretty clear that the entire proposed pipeline route alignment within Burnaby is located in a new corridor. This is unlike other locations where they're co-locating with existing rights-of-ways. I would also note at this point that the NEB Act does not require Kinder Morgan to provide any of the following in its PBBOR: workspace and access information beyond the 10-meter-wide easement area; information on duration to assess impacts relating noise, soil management, access, traffic, dust, and light, to name a few. It also does not provide or require provision of rationale for workspace areas, or pipeline installation methodology, or timing and mitigation of impacted workspace areas. And it does not require information provision on use of highways or local roads as workspace areas which could impact traffic and access. The absence of the above listed information compromises a person's ability to make informed decisions and respond to the NEB within that very tight 30-day timeframe as required by the NEB Act. The NEB process does not make it easy for the concerned public to provide input in a timely manner. Now some specifics. North Road Crossing at Burnett River Conservation Area, moving from east to west, so bottom-right corner, and going northwest from there along the 10-meter-wide pipeline easement which is in red, staff would note the following: the proximity of the proposed pipeline alignment to the bridge structure on North Road, you can almost barely make the, or see the bridge structure on the north side, or on the corner. Because of the proximity of the alignment, there'll be significant constraints placed on municipalities to repair, maintain, and expand the bridge in future. Now, this bridge is jointly owned by the City of Burnaby and City of Coquitlam, so it's, I don't know if you can see it, it's on the right side, very right corner. Now, for the segment through Burnett River Conservation Area, we understand that Kinder Morgan will use trenchless technology to install the 36-inch-wide pipeline in order to minimize damage to the area. However, we note that Kinder Morgan typically requires the easements or rights-of-ways to be clear of trees and vegetation. As such, we could see fragmentation of conservation area, as well as impact to Holmes Creek and Lost Creek, which run perpendicular from the alignment. The proposed alignment is also proximal to Burnett River, you can see that on the south side. In the event of a pipeline rupture or release, there will be, there will not be sufficient time for containment on-site, and the release of dilbit, which is what this pipeline will be carrying into the waterways, will have a devastating effect on Burnett River and downstream into Fraser River. So, some photos to give you the context of really the site and what it looks like. This is a photo taken from the bridge on North Road looking to the west. The Trans-Canada Highway is located to the right. The Burnett River is located to the left as you are viewing this photo. The proposed pipeline alignment will come into Burnaby on the south side of the railway tracks, or the left side of the photo there, and after some distance will cross over onto the, onto the north side. So lots of vegetation that would be impacted, a very tight area to work in. This photo is taken at midpoint on Trans-Canada Highway looking into the Burnett River Conservation Area, and the proposed alignment in this case will generally run peril to the highway. This is taken further west along Trans-Canada Highway. The photo shows the rail corridor on the right side, you can just make out the rail cars on the right side. And the proposed pipeline easement will closely follow the rail corridor in this area and go underneath the highway towards Government Street. The park is quite well-used by the public, and this is a photo taken from the Metro-Vancouver Axis Road. Just a little bit away from the Axis Road, if you're looking further south, you can look at the Burnett River. So this is what I'm talking about, is that in event of a release and very little time for containment, the effects will be devastating. Now for portion of segments north of Trans-Canada Highway, Cottonwood Park, Government Street, and Lowheed Highway. While the PBBR only provides information on the alignment of the proposed 10-meter pipeline easement, which is the overview and the side view of the alignment, the notices that the city was served provided information on workspace areas as well. And as you would see here, there'd be significant amount of trees that'll be lost, and as such, there'll be reduction in visual and noise buffer that is afforded to the residents on the east, and will also have impacts on the city infrastructure on Government Street. As we move further up north towards the, on the alignment, we see that it's going to be going on the east side of Cottonwood Park. Now, Cottonwood Park is to be developed as a neighborhood park site. The park contains environmentally significant areas associated with Stony Creek and its related riparian setbacks to the west of the property. And I've got to figure that details out this more clearly a bit later. The site also contains jet fuel line and BC Hydro Power Line on the east side. So now, having this alignment go through this area will really encumber the site, will minimize the ability of the city to really use a portion of the land as a neighborhood park, in essence sterilizing the park for its intended public use. If I move along from there, going south of the Lowheed Highway towards Gallardy Intersection, you'll note that it also crosses Stony Creek, and it's an above-grade crossing. Again, any release from this area, I can challenge anybody to say that they can contain it on-site, it will not happen. Moving further along the south and at the intersection point of Gallardy and Lowheed, there's a significant amount of trees that'll be removed, as both part of the easement area as well as the workspace area. And that's going to have, affect, impact rather, the development for habitat for humanity, as you see just directly on the south side. This is a photo taken at Holston Court and Government Street showing existing forested buffer area, and as I said before, much of that will be impacted. Cottonwood Park, as you see on the south side of the park on Government Street, again, vegetated quite well, would be unfortunate to see the destruction of these trees. Cottonwood Park, east side of the park, as I said before, you have the hydro lines and the, you can barely, you can make out the jet fuel line alignment. Once again, to mention, it's kept clear of trees and shrubs, so if you do trenchless technology or otherwise, doesn't mean anything because you'll be taking the trees out anyways. Here's the figure I was talking about earlier. On the east side, you have the hydro and the jet fuel line, you have got the proposed Trans Mountain line coming in. I might add, that's a 10-meter width plus eight meters plus of the workspace area bringing about 18 meters of vegetation removal. Moving to the west, you've got the Burnett River, Burnett Fraser Greenway, you've got the Stony Creek, you've got the riparian area setback, and the very small space that was afforded previously for any use as a neighborhood park would be gone. Just a photo showing the Stony Creek and all the vegetation. It'd be sad to see an impact to this creek. This is just showing the Burnett Fraser Greenway, and in the background, you see the Lowheed This is Habitat for Humanity Residential Neighborhood. You can see the trees in the back that are a buffer now will be gone. Habitat for Humanity Residential Neighborhood showing the existing forested buffer area that will also be impacted. Apologize. So now for segments of Gallardy Way and East Lake Drive and in Lake City Business Centre. The proposed alignment in the northwest corner of intersection of Gallardy Way and Lowheed Highway, and portion of along Gallardy Way, which you can just make out in this figure, could constrain the future capacity improvements of the intersection and the travel lane. For the East Lake Drive itself, the information we've now obtained through, as part of the notice, we note that the work area varies between six meters or up to 25 meters. And this will certainly impact the city infrastructure and third-party infrastructure that's on East Lake Drive. Rational for such widths or variance in widths is not provided. So here's a photo showing East Lake Drive and Lake City Greenway. The entire green area is going to be used up for easement and workspace. In the background there, you see some trees that'll also be removed as part of the work. For segments crossing Broadway, along Broadway, Shelmont Tank Farm, and Forest Hills Meadowwood Park Buffer Area. So, in this case, the pipeline crosses, the Broadway runs along Broadway, and we have city infrastructure that'll be impacted, not only impacted, in time we have to do future improvement works because of the close proximity of the alignment of, a trans-mountain alignment to the infrastructure, there'd be an added cost that we would be, the taxpayers would have to pay for. So, as the alignment would go through the Shelmont Tank Farm, there'll be a large number of trees that'll be impacted, removed, and so the impact will be significant. You can also make out a tributary to Eagle Creek, it's very faint blue color, about halfway where they say Shelmont Tank Farm, that runs within that 10-meter easement, that it's going to be impacted as well. For council's information, there's a buffer, landscape buffer covenant registered to title to the Shelmont lands rather, in favor of the city. And this covenant was a condition of approval of Shell's subdivision and rezoning application to develop Forest Hills Meadowwood Neighborhood. Given that the proposed pipeline alignment will significantly hinder Shell's ability to comply with its obligation under the covenant, the city has written to Shell requesting copy of Shell's response to the National Energy Board and identify the noted conflict. This is what Forest Hills Meadowwood Park Neighborhood looks like right now. You have got very good buffer, part of which will be removed, or the trees will be removed, and that'll be impacted if the alignment does go through Shelmont Tank Farm property. This is just showing the Meadowwood, sorry, Meadowwood Park and the buffer in the background. This is overlooking Shelmont Tank Farm and the city's covenant at Buffer Area from Underhill. Now for the tunnel segment between Burnaby Terminal and the Westridge Marine Terminal. So for this area, there's proposal to put in two 30-inch lines from Burnaby Terminal to the Westridge Marine Terminal. And the two pipelines will be located in a 4.25-meter or 14-meter diameter tunnel. The tunnel will be 2.6 kilometers in length, and as previously shown, the tunnel portals are located within Kinder Morgan facilities. According to Kinder Morgan, the existing pipeline connecting the terminals may also be moved into the tunnel, subject to a separate regulatory process. So this will now make it three pipelines in the tunnel. Now, upon completion, the pipeline in the precast concrete liner is proposed to be backfilled with grout. Now, as you note, Kinder Morgan's requiring a 10-meter-wide easement area following the tunnel alignment. The easement area projects to the surface from, to the surface of the land above the tunnel. As such, there's a, there could be potential impact because there may be trees and shrubs that would be required to be removed by Kinder Morgan. Also, in an event of doing some additional testing or responding to emergencies, there could also be potential impacts to this easement area. You can also see the Burnaby Mountain Parkway on the bottom right, or almost bottom corner, that, the Centennial Way, the Barnett Row Highway for which we're responsible, will be impacted because we don't know whether Kinder Morgan will require us to file for approvals for work in and around that 10-meter easement corridor. So in summary, the key areas that are going to have significant impact would be the Cottonwood Park. It sterilizes the parkland for future public uses. There's also significant impact to Stony Creek. For Forest Hills Meadowwood Park Neighborhood, we would see a diminished value of city's buffer area covenant. There'd also be a loss of forested area that serves as a buffer to the Shelmont Tank Farm. And finally, the Burnett Conservation Area, we see a significant decrease in conservation values through loss of forest. We also see significant impacts to Burnett River watershed. So, last report recommendations that arise after review. We recommend that staff authorize, or that council authorize staff to file statements of opposition with National Energy Board relating to Kinder Morgan's proposed pipeline routing plan, and that a copy of the report be forwarded to all Burnaby Members of Parliament and the Sustainable City Advisory Committee. That concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duttani. That was a very complete presentation. We are going to consider the report independently in just a few minutes, but I was thinking, council, that we should move on now to dealing with the proclamations and delegations, and then come back to the report after those. Are you content with that? All right. So with that, I'll move on to proclamations. The first proclamation is Counselor Dollywell, please.
Thank you, your worship. Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby proclamation, Elizabeth Frye Week. Whereas the first Elizabeth Frye Society in the world was formed in British Columbia in 1939 to help women in conflict with the law, and whereas the Elizabeth Frye Society of Greater Vancouver celebrated its 76 years of service to the people of this area in 2015, and whereas this service has involved over 1.2 million hours of volunteer service, and whereas to continue in the worthwhile and valued endeavors, the Elizabeth Frye Society requests increased support from the people of the City of Burnaby. Now therefore I, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim May 7 to 13, 2017, as the Elizabeth Frye Week in the City of Burnaby. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Dollywell. And by the way, the reason we took Mr. Duttani first was that he's on a plane flight to Edmonton tonight, so he had to leave right away, but we do have staff who can answer any questions. The second proclamation, Counselor McEnell.
Thank you, your worship. The Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby proclamation, Human Value Days. Whereas raising and increasing awareness of human values of truth, right, conduct, peace, love, and nonviolence, and all the multiple sub-values like honesty, integrity, kindness, and caring in the City of Burnaby is the primary goal of this wonderful city. And whereas these values are inherent, inherent in all creeds, countries, cultures, and communities, making these values truly values without borders, and whereas making the City of Burnaby a city of character is for the greatest benefit of all our citizens, and whereas reducing and even erasing incidents of violence of all types in our community and our city will bring peace and progress to the aspects and the activities of this province, and whereas unlike other walks, Walk for Value is not a fundraiser, but a way to make the city richer and healthier by pledging our commitment to practice human values and be motivated to serve our community throughout, through volunteer work, and by donating blood and food for the needy. And whereas Walk for Values is designed to raise awareness of human values and promote individual responsibilities towards collective future humanitarian, humanity. Walk for Values is a platform to educate people of the importance of practice these high human values in daily life and the awareness it creates in making enlightened citizens for universal peace. Now therefore Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim April 24, 2017, as the Human Rights Values Day in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you, Counselor McEnell. Counselor Valco.
Thank you, your worship. This is a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby, and it's in regards to MS Awareness Month. Whereas multiple sclerosis is a chronic, often disabling neurological disease affecting an estimated 1.1 million Canadians and more than 12,000 British Colombians, and whereas multiple sclerosis symptoms vary widely and may lead to problems with numbness, coordination, vision, and speech, as well as extreme fatigue and even paralysis. And whereas there is no known cause of, prevention of, or cure for multiple sclerosis, and whereas the Multiple Sclerosis Society of Canada is the only national organization in Canada that supports both MS research and services for people with MS and their families, and whereas annual fundraising events such as the Scotiabank MS Walk, the MS Bike Tour, and A&W's Burger to Beat MS Support Programs to enhance the lives of people affected by multiple sclerosis and their families, and supports MS research in Canada. And whereas since 1948, the Multiple Sclerosis Society of Canada has provided more than $100 million for MS research, and is grateful for the dedication and commitment of its supporters and volunteers that has made this possible, and whereas BC will continue to lead the way in multiple sclerosis research through one of the world's most renowned multiple sclerosis research facilities at the University of British Columbia. And whereas together we will find ways to enhance the quality of lives for people affected by multiple sclerosis and to find a cure to end MS. Now therefore Derek Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim May 2017 to be MS Awareness Month in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you, Counselor Valco. And Counselor McEnell, back to you.
Yes, thank you. The Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby proclamation, National The Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby proclamation, National Volunteer Week. Whereas 12.7 million Canadians, volunteers, give their time to help others, contributing close to 2 billion volunteer hours per year. And whereas volunteers mentor our children, feed our hungry, comfort our lonely, and improve lives with their skills and talents. And whereas Burnaby volunteers are students, families, self-employed, retirees, new immigrants, connecting to the people in the places where they live. And whereas through volunteering, people also get to know their community with the result that Burnaby is a more desirable place to live. Now therefore, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim April 23rd to 29th, 2017, as National Volunteer Week in the city of Burnaby.
Thank you, Counselor McEnell. And Counselor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship. And from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby, proclamation, Rail Safety Week. Whereas Rail Safety Week is to be held across Canada from April 24th to 30th, 2017, and whereas it is in the public's interest to raise citizens' awareness on reducing avoidable accidents, injuries, and damages caused by collisions at level crossings or incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas Operation Lifesaver is a public-private partnership whose aim is to work with the rail industry, governments, police services, the media, and other agencies, and the public to raise rail safety awareness. And whereas Operation Lifesaver has requested city council to adopt this resolution in support of its ongoing effort to save lives and prevent injuries in communities, including our municipalities. Now therefore, Derek Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, does hereby proclaim April 24th to 30th, 2017, as Rail Safety Week in the city of Burnaby.
Thank you, Counselor Calendino. And we're going to read one more proclamation after the delegations. So with that, a motion to hear the delegations, please. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Our first delegation is Ms. Anne Waller from the Citizen Support Services here in the city of Burnaby. Ms. Waller, nice to see you, and I see you brought some volunteers and staff with you.
We have. Thank you.
All the volunteers who are out there, put up your hand. Show me where you are. Oh, there we go. Look at them all. Nice to see you.
Thank you, your worship. Mayor Corrigan, councillors, managers, and directors. Citizen Support Services is always so pleased to have the opportunity to present our annual report to you each year. And this year, instead of you listening to me, I would like to invite one of our staff to come up, and she's going to introduce a special guest today who will be doing the talking. So without further ado, I will invite Michelle Wilson up.
Good evening. As we celebrate National Volunteer Week, Burnaby's 125th and Canada's 150th birthdays, we thought it appropriate to highlight the inspirational story of one particular volunteer, Sabah Mohammed. Sabah's mental strength, hard work, and positive spirit have taken her a long way from being a newcomer to Canada in 2012 to becoming a Canadian citizen in 2017. She's gone from English classes and adult continuing education courses to graduating with honors from college this year. Her efforts have been rewarded with multiple job offers and now a full-time position as a pharmaceutical technician. In addition to studying and volunteering at our child health clinics, Sabah and her husband, Man, who is also a volunteer with our department as a driver, have seen their three children off to SFU and Dalhousie Universities, and two of their children are here with us Sabah's journey illustrates the importance for new immigrants to volunteer as a step in the right direction that helps lead to success in creating a good life and a strong community whilst inspiring others to do the same. So without further ado, it is my privilege to introduce to you Sabah Mohammed.
Welcome, Sabah.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my volunteering experience and my first steps in Canada. When I first came to Canada, 2012, I was lonely, no friends, no family members, and I had homesickness. I wanted to be involved in the community, and I wasn't able to express my feeling to anybody else around me. So I enrolled in the community adult school in order to learn English despite the fact that I had studied back home in English, but it was scientific, not cultural. So there in the school, I found out that people, multicultural community, all of them are get along together, and I was wondering, how did they all become friends? And it was all because of the volunteering community. And then I decided to volunteer in order to improve my English language, and then I wanted to be part of this community, and it happened. I had my first interview in Canada with Michelle, and then she was like, welcome home. The same phrase I heard in the airport when I first landed, but it has different tests. Welcome home. This is my home. So I started to get rid of the bitterness that I had. I forget about my homesickness, and I start volunteering and get to know and learned about the environment of workplace in Canada. And I get involved in the community, and I start learning a lot about the people, the harmony of the community, the mutual respect to each other. And this multicultural community, like a small pieces of mosaic, and the strong system of Canada is the frame. I started thinking in different way. I set a goal, is a reasonable goal for myself, to start over and forget about the bitterness and all the stuff that I left behind back home. This is my new home. So I get along with the volunteers, especially when I, like my volunteering experience in the child clinic, helped me to choose my current career path, to be like working with the medical area. Like, this is related to my previous specialist. I'm a veterinary doctor back home, so. I enrolled in the CDI College, and I graduated to be pharmacy technician. And from practicum directly, I get hired on spot. And then I was happy about my English, the people, the community. I am part of this community. So like, I volunteered my time to the public health, but I get a lot in return. I get a lot in return. I felt like I am not alone. I have people around me who are so supportive, so welcoming. I learned about the system, about the new life, about the country. This is such a beautiful country. If we keep attach ourselves to that part of the world, the bitterness, we will never find the beauty of this country. I am so fortunate. I'm so thankful. I recommend volunteering to every newcomer, everybody. It's a great opportunity to discover the community and make new friends. I also encourage my husband to volunteer, and he is part of the volunteering program, and he had many senior friends now. He can't live without them. Thank you for this time to listen for my experience. I'm so thankful. Thank you.
Well, that couldn't have been done any better. I think that's probably one of the most poignant presentations that have ever been made by Citizen Support Services here to council in the way of an annual report, because often we get a lot of the facts and figures here, but we don't get to see the people who are involved in our Citizen Support Volunteer Program. And it shows you the value, not only to the people who receive the volunteer services, but to the people who actually volunteer. And I think sometimes we forget that a lot of the reward in volunteering isn't just helping other people, it's the feeling you get yourself from having contributed to other people's welfare. And you put aside your own individual needs for a moment to give someone else a helping hand, it makes a big difference. So Sabah, I think you are a perfect example of what people can learn by volunteering.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Dollywell, you had a comment?
Just, your worship, just to say a couple of things myself as well. Thank you very much, first of all, coming to make the presentation, and particularly Sabah, relating your experience. I just want to add this, that most of the times we see this volunteering as basically benefiting the beneficiaries, but as you said, your worship, it's a two-way street. In this case, it's very obvious that when you come to a new place, sometimes you're by yourself lonely, you don't have very many friends. This is a great way to really get into the community. Not only that, a language experience that comes with it, learning culture about people, learning other things about the host country is an opportunity. So I would suggest to you that all those who have contact with newcomers, particularly new Canadians trying to get into the community, it's a great way to really have that experience. And you feel better, as Mayor has said. It's very rewarding, very satisfying, but it's also helping the local other Canadians who have basically been sometimes shut in. They need support, they need help, and so they benefit from your experience. So thank you very much for doing so. It's just something that I believe is in the nature of Canadians, when we read that there's over 2 billion hours are put into this. So you just fit right in. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations on the success of your children. I know for every parent, watching your children take advantage of the opportunities here in Canada and to begin building their lives is probably the most rewarding thing out of the big adventure of moving to a new country. So congratulations that your children are having so much success.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, if you would just stay for a moment, we have another delegation which shows you another aspect to Canadian society and one that's important for all of us to share. And I'm now going to invite up our representative from the New Westminster District Labor Council, Sam Otim. If you'll come up, please, Sam. Sam's going to make a presentation on the National Day of Mourning, and then subsequently I'll be reading out our proclamation on the National Day of Mourning and presenting a copy. So Sam, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Samuel Otim, and I am a delegate to the New Westminster District Labor Council. Just like she talked about her experience a while ago, I'm a relatively new Canadian as well, so I can relate to her experience. Each year, we present to municipal councils within our region to seek their support and recognition of April 28th as the Day of Mourning for workers killed and injured on the job. This presentation is designed to raise awareness of workplace health and safety. We believe that workplace health and safety is everyone's responsibility. The purpose of the Day of Mourning is twofold, to remember workers killed and injured at the job and to prevent future injuries. Positive change happens when we all work together. The B.C. Government and Service Employees Union has been working to raise awareness of musculoskeletal injuries, or MSI. MSI disproportionately affects women and often girls unreported. Storing supplies on high shelves in liquor stores, for example, forces women to reach for heavy supplies. By identifying this risk and lowering load heights, workplaces have reduced the risk of injury to female workers. Education is key to prevention, and unions are leading the way. The Health and Safety Centre of the B.C. Federation of Labor has evolved into a centre of excellence for occupational health and safety training and education. The centre's programs are open to everyone, including students, and they have helped thousands of workers, organizations, and companies know their rights and their responsibility for workplace safety. The impact of work-related injury and death reaches beyond the workplace and into our communities. In 2015, 122 B.C. workers died from work-related injury or illness. Workers from our communities have families, coach sports, volunteer, they get involved and inspire in various ways. Our communities lose when we don't put their safety at work first. One side of all workplace injuries happen to young workers. From 2010 to 2014, there were 32,000 young workers injured and 29 work-related deaths in B.C., with young men aged 15 to 24 being twice as likely to get injured on the job. The B.C. Federation of Labor's Alive After Five campaign is geared toward educating young workers on their rights and the importance of our health and safety measures in the workplace. Bringing accountability to workplace health and safety also offers new hope for improvements. May 9th will be the 25th anniversary of the Westray Mine Explosion in Nova Scotia. The United Steelworkers Union had begun an organizing campaign to represent the workers prior to the explosion that killed all the 26 miners. Moreover, workers had identified serious safety concerns at the site. All that is left today is a park located on the grounds covering the shattered mine below, along with a memorial to the 26 miners. Their lights will shine, says the monument bearing each of their names. The union still maintains connections with the families and remains committed to the struggle that it started on behalf of the Westray miners before the disaster event The United Steelworkers Westray Campaign led to B.C. 45, which amended the Criminal Code of Canada to assign criminal liability to organizations for acts of their representatives. The Westray Amendment was passed unanimously in the House of Commons and was proclaimed into law in early 2004. But more than a decade later, the law is not being enforced. More than 1,000 workers are killed in Canada each year. Investigations by law enforcement, however, do not view workplace fatalities through the lens of criminal liability. Instead, responsibility is passed off to provincial regulators who have no power to lay criminal charges. Criminal charges are dropped or bargained away in exchange for fines that companies still only ask a cost of doing business. Earlier this month, a subsidiary of a large Vancouver-based construction company was fined less than $50,000 for the death of a worker in 2015 on a Klona job site. The WBC report found high-risk and repeated violations were the cause of his death. In 2013, the steelworkers began a campaign called Stop the Killing and Enforce the Law, and have lobbied to ensure that police, crown prosecutors, and regulators are better educated and trained on the Westray amendments and that there is coordination between agencies responding to workplace fatalities. The campaign has made progress. In January of 2016, for the first time, the Westray amendments were used to sentence a manager at Metroon Construction for the death of four workers in Toronto. In sentencing, the Ontario Superior Court judge said he needed to impose a significant term to make it clear to others that they have a serious obligation to ensure the safety of their workers. Workplace death and serious injury and disease do not discriminate, nor are they random and without cause. On the Day of Mourning, we reflect on the importance of accountability for health and safety in our workplaces and the need for education so both workers and employers know their rights and responsibilities. their rights and responsibilities. By working together, we can ensure all workers are safe on the job. Municipal support is a building block on this important work. Everyone here today can help us make a difference. I call upon you to be safety-conscious and to support accountability measures and health and safety education in your workplaces and in schools. On Friday, April 28th, at 11:00 a.m., please join us at Pier Park in New Westminster to commemorate the Day of Mourning for workers killed and injured on the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. And I have a proclamation to read from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby. Proclamation: National Day of Mourning. Whereas every year, more than 1,000 Canadian workers are killed on the job, and whereas thousands more are permanently disabled, and whereas hundreds of thousands are injured, and whereas thousands of others die from cancer, lung disease, and other ailments caused by exposure to toxic substances at their workplaces, and whereas April 28th of each year has been chosen by the Canadian Labour Congress as a day of mourning for these victims of workplace accidents and disease, a day to remember the supreme sacrifice they have been forced to make in order to earn a living, a day to renew approaches to governments for tougher occupational health and safety standards and more effective compensation, a day to rededicate ourselves to the goal of making Canada's workplaces safe. Now therefore, I, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, hereby proclaim April 28th, 2017, as the National Day of Mourning in the City of Burnaby. I would ask everyone to stand with me now for a moment of silence in recognition of all of those workers. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Mr. Odom, we were very proud at our last council meeting that we received an award of recognition from WorkSafe B.C. for the accomplishments in our city in preventing workplace accidents. We also received a significant reduction in regard to the cost of workers' premiums as a result of work we did in those safety areas. So that our taxpayers not only recognise we're sending workers home at the end of the day uninjured and safe to their families, but also there are real benefits to our taxpayers by ensuring that we run a safe system, and that we're not put in a position of having to compensate workers for injuries that were suffered on the job. So this is a win-win proposition. As a safe city, is a city that avoids spending money it doesn't have to in order to deal with the aftermath of accidents. So every time our staff are out there making sure that we've got a safe workplace, we're looking after our workers and we're looking after our taxpayers. So thank you very much, Mr. Odom, for being here on behalf of the New Westminster District Labor Council to show our support for ensuring that our workers are in a safe workplace. Thank you very much. And to all those volunteers, I wanted you to be here for this because it's important to recognise that we are all working together. We come from diversity but to a common purpose, one to ensure that we live in the best society that we can produce together. And that really is what is meaningful about both of these presentations, one that deals with volunteerism in our community, another where our trade unions are standing up for working people and the safety of their workplace. Those issues and the ability of new Canadians to stand up on those issues and to be part of our community is a very important lesson for everyone tonight. To those who sometimes question new Canadians coming into our country, this is an opportunity to see the very best of our new Canadians, and how easily it is for them to integrate into our society and adopt common values that are important to all of us. So I want to thank all of you volunteers for being here with us tonight, and Mr. Odom representing the unions, because this really is a statement about what kind of city we are. And building from this foundation, I truly believe we can only get better. So thank you very much for being with us. And if anybody would like to move on, this is an appropriate time, or you can stay and listen to the rest of the meeting. Oh, wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait. Stop, stop. I forgot to make the presentation. This is a framed copy of our proclamation today.
Thank you.
You have to take back. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now you can go. I'm glad everybody could see the presentation on Kinder Morgan, too. Oh, Counselor Jordan. I'm sorry.
While they're clearing out, I was impressed that even though Mr. Odom is new to this country, he has learned to say musculoskeletal. And any of the people who deal with health and safety in the workplace, it took me three years to learn how to pronounce that, and I'm an English speaker by birth. So learning how to say musculoskeletal is like proof of entry as a health and safety activist. If you can't say it, you can't wear the yellow badge, right? So I'm just very oppressed.
Well, you can just imagine being plunked down in another country, being obliged to learn a new language and to operate in a new language.
And then learn the lingo.
It is quite amazing what people manage to do and how quickly they're able to contribute meaningfully.
Five years ago.
Amazing, isn't it?
I thought he came to Canada. Wow.
Yeah. Well, there's lots, there's, out of the nine members of council, five weren't born in Canada. So yeah, there's lots of experience around this table. All right, a motion to receive the correspondence. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favour, opposed and carried. The first is a request from Stony Creek Community School to post lawn signs for the purpose of publicising their community fun fair. Been moved and seconded. All those in favour, opposed, carried. The second is a request from the Burnaby Potter's Guild to place temporary signs on city property to advertise their annual summer and winter shows and sales at Capitol Hill Community Hall in 2017. Been moved and seconded. All those in favour, opposed and carried. All right, and a motion to resolve into a committee of the whole to consider reports. Been moved and seconded. All those in favour, opposed and carried. The first report is from the Community Heritage Commission, Counselor Jordan.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. From the commission, the city award sponsorship for the Rivers to the Sea Regional Heritage Fair, and the recommendation is that council approve $500 to fund the City of Burnaby awards for the 2017 Rivers to Sea Regional Heritage Fair. An is a move.
Agreed on the motion.
And basically, Your Worship, this is an event where young people from our elementary schools, certain selected elementary schools every year, come together and develop projects that relate to our history, our history of the region, history of the city, history of our country. And it's quite an amazing event, this year being held between, on May the 12th and 13th at Burnaby Village Museum. We are seeking also additional judges and sponsorship for the fair, but the city always does provide the primary award to the students. I luckily get to present those on Saturday afternoon, and the enthusiasm of the students and the family members and everything for that is really a sight to behold. So I urge people to, you know, come and join us on May the 12th and 13th and see what amazing works the kids have come up with this year.
Great. You ready for the question? All those in favour, opposed, carried. Item B.
And the second is the Heritage B.C. Annual Conference in Victoria. The recommendation from the commission is that council authorised an expenditure of up to $4,000 for Community Heritage Commission members to attend the Heritage B.C. Annual Conference this year, being held in Victoria, May 2017. An is a move. And I'm not sure if any of the commission members are actually going to so attend, but this is allowed for it if they so indicate to Blanca by tomorrow.
I hope somebody is able to go on our behalf, but this'll...
Enabling.
Yeah, it'll allow that to happen. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favour, opposed, carried. Next report is Financial Management Committee in regard to the financial plan for 2017-2021. Counselor Johnson.
Your Worship, on behalf of the committee, I would move that council approve the 2017-21 financial plan. The council authorised staff to bring down the Burnaby financial plan by law 2017, authorising the additional funding sources, proposed expenditures, and proposed transfers between funds set out in each year in the planning period as shown in Schedule A attached here too, forming part of the report. And the council authorised staff to bring down the Burnaby rates by law 2017 in the amount of $250,575,300 to provide funding for the 2017 fiscal year plan included in the 2017-22 financial plan. Oh, I guess that's 21, I'm sorry. I suppose it's supposed to be 21.
Yeah.
With some move.
Second motion.
Your Worship, the report this before us is authorising the budget for 2017 and sets out a preliminary budget for 2018 through 21. The report this before us is, as I say, setting out the expenditure plan and revenue plan for the city for 2017. The report this before us includes some small-ticket items and some big-ticket items. On the small side, where are we here? It gets smaller. Includes services, provision for safety and security of citizens, maintaining, improving existing infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, various community facilities, investment in new technology to better serve the needs of our citizens. Just to give some specific items, Your Worship, we're looking at enhanced recycling and waste response times, we're continuing our LED streetlight conversion, invasive species control, continued rumble street improvements, some outreach, additional outreach services for our library system, Burnaby 125 celebrations, sidewalk and urban trail enhancements, and then on the capital side, continuing work on the Willington Linear Park. We should start to see that taking place in the coming year. South Burnaby arenas, the architectural side and planning work is being done for that right now, and some business licence enhancements to our SAP programme so that we can better serve the business community in the area of business licences and various related subjects. The report also includes roughly $3 million in permissive exemptions whereby the city assists religious and social service groups in the community who are providing services that the city wouldn't normally undertake, and what we do is offset some of their tax liability in order to assist with that process. I would like to point out two things as we go forward. Number one, 60%, we are looking at a tax year, the report this before us is setting out a proposed tax increase of 2.95%, sorry, 2.95% for 2017. That is middle of the range, if one can understand, from various cities around the Lower Mainland. We have done our best to keep it low, but seeing that, we are seeing additional forces such as labour costs, inflation, various pressures around the city that cause us to keep the rate in that range. I would like to point out, though, that the process for taxation in British Columbia is dependent on the B.C. Assessment Authority, who sets the assessed value of the properties which are taxed. The city has no control over what those rates are. We understand, I know mine's up quite a bit this year, I understand that most people around the Lower Mainland are looking at increased assessments from the B.C. Assessment Authority. Now, because of that process, it's going to mean that the tax burden is shifted around the Lower Mainland so that some people are going to pay more than they should or feel they should, and other people are going to pay less. That process is beyond the city. We are strictly approving a 2.95% tax increase, which is pretty standard to our process on a yearly basis. I'd like to also point out that roughly 60% of the tax bill that's going to be mailed out in a couple of weeks is for other levels of government. The large portion of that other 60% are funds collected for the provincial government in school taxes, there's Metro Vancouver assessments to run the regional government, there's Translink taxation to run the transit system, and a couple of others such as the B.C. Assessment Authority. So although we set the city portion of the taxes, we do not set those other taxes, and they're way beyond the city's control. Seeing that, I think the 2.95% for 2017 is reasonable in relation to the cost of doing business in the city, and it's reasonable in relation to other cities around the Lower Mainland.
Counselor McDeenell.
I think it's a, the budget is a balanced budget, of course, but it's also balanced in what we're trying to achieve for the city to keep it working and to meet the needs of our citizens and that. And I worked it out on a calculator, with this increase, the average taxpayer will pay 13 cents a day more in their taxes. That's what it works out to, 2.95. So it's a small increase when we look at, on the average. There's going to be people above that and people below that. So the citizens enjoy our facilities we got, the services we provide them and that, so I think it's a very reasonable budget for this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We've discussed this item several times before, so I'm not surprised that there'll be relatively little in the way of comment at this stage. But are you ready for the question?
That's it.
Are all those in favour, opposed, carried? All right, moving on then to Public Safety Committee. Counselor Calendino, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and this is for installation of a crosswalk at Oakland Street and Daffron Avenue, and the recommendation is that the committee recommend to cancel the installation of a roadside mounted special crosswalk on Oakland Street and Daffron Avenue as detailed in this report. Your Worship, this is a leftover from the Traffic Safety Committee, which has been folded into the Public Safety Committee, and this request has been longstanding, and staff has now done its due diligence one more time and has come to the conclusion that it is time to look at installing a crosswalk at this location for a number of reasons. First of all, being pedestrian safety. Secondly, the road, Oakland Street, is a major collector, and as a major collector, the traffic tends to move at a little higher speed than normal. tends to move at a little higher speed than normal, not allowing pedestrians enough time to cross at that location. Other, two other difficulties are there, that there is no really signal crosswalk for half a kilometer either way of this location. So it's a long distance for people to be able to cross the street. And there are a lot of pedestrians that do cross to catch the buses on the other side of the street and as well in the summertime to go to the trails at Deer Lake Park. The staff obviously did do the counts and has come to the conclusion that given the speed, given the lack of visibility, because at that location, there are two bends on either side of the specific location that at this time a, a signal was warranted. So they recommend not simply a zebra type of crosswalk signal, but also advanced pedestrian crosswalk ahead signs as required in both directions are required. And to, in, in order to ensure that the crosswalk is alerted to the drivers, they're also recommended that we install rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which will be the first time that this will be done in Burnaby. And that's due because of the bends on the road and you need people to have that warning for the, for the visibility of the coming sidewalk. So staff recommends that also a concrete sidewalk be constructed along the north side of Oakland Street between Elgin and Dufferin. And that the bus stop also be moved over to a Dufferin rather than Elgin to facilitate the access to the bus stop for the people that cross at that location. So the, the work required to implement include a number of things which are listed on the bottom page 26, including some of the things that I've said and then as well as trimming and removal of vegetation and other things. The cost to implement the work, your worship, will be around $100,000 and which seems to me not to be too excess considering you'd be having flashing light and flashing signals, et cetera, et cetera. And this will be put into 2018 capital budget. And it is delayed mainly because they have to communicate with Burnaby Mountain Bus Company to remove, to, to move the bus stops.
Right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on to the City Manager's Report. This is the impact of Kinder Morgan's proposed pipeline routing plan. And I thought that was a very clear briefing from Deputy Director of Engineering and Environmental Services, Deepak Duttani, who has lived with this issue for much of his professional career over the last, what, five years anyway, five years. It's been a tremendous amount of work to keep up with exactly what the National Energy Board and Kinder Morgan are doing. And much of it, as you could see from his briefing, is frustrating to cope with because there are often time limitations that are unreasonable and, and certainly dealing with it is like trying to nail Jell-O to the wall. Oftentimes you find that, that it's so vague and indeterminate that it's hard for staff to be able to give the professional advice they want to give in relation to the matters they have to deal with because they just don't have enough details to be able to formulate a plan. And so I think that's probably one of the most disappointing things for anybody who's a professional trying to deal with the National Energy Board and Kinder Morgan is that it's consistently difficult to get information that you can rely upon. And most of it is put off for some future date. That makes it very hard for our staff to be able to advise us and the community. And I think Mr. Duttani does a very good job under the circumstances, but it has been certainly unsatisfying going through this process. Comments on the report? Counselor Volko.
Thank you, your worship. I'll try to be very brief. I agree with you that Mr. Duttani's presentation was very good. I'm looking at the recommendations of who we send the report to and the only, the only people getting copies of this report will be the Burnaby Members of Parliament and the city's Sustainable City Advisory Committee. And I was kind of hoping, I'm not going to make a motion, but maybe staff, when they're sending out this information, might send this report to some of the major radio media in particular. When I listened to them on this issue over the last year and a half, two years, you know, sometimes Donald Trump is right. They do make up some news. They present alternative facts. I don't know where they get their information, but at least we should send this report out to the major media and let them have the information and let them then base their comments on real facts. And the other one is my good friends who really waste no time in sending off letters to council and staff whenever I make a comment in regards to their practices. And that's the Greater Vancouver Real Estate Board. I think they should be, be sent a copy of this. So somewhere down the road, some future council won't be sitting here when somebody shows up saying, gee, nobody told me about this pipeline coming through, not even my Realtor. So that excuse won't wash 20 years down the road because we've sent this information to our good friends at the real estate board. Thank you, your worship.
You and Counselor Volko, I've just got to say that, that when you talk about issues like this, as often people say, well, you're just conspiracy theorists. I mean, how dare you think that there is a conspiracy going on between the media and the petroleum producers? But as we all know, there is a formal agreement between postmedia and the Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers to do just that, is to butter each other's bread. And the reality is they promise a advertising surfeit for the newspaper if in fact they give them editorial support. And to me, that is the epitome of the kind of conspiracy that does justify those people who say, I'm a conspiracy theorist. Because when you have formal written agreements between major media outlets to take positions in favor of a major interest group in Canada dealing with petroleum resources, then you do have a conspiracy that controls the way the media portrays the petroleum industry. And not many people in the media will even mention it, will even mention it. It is a dirty secret that this is going on as part of major media's effort to promote the petroleum industry. It's very, very difficult to be able to trust media when you have that kind of situation going on. And I know that Ralph Mayer has recently been writing about that very issue, expressing his frustration at the fact that blogs talk about this, the information's available, but the mainstream media itself doesn't talk about it because why would you tell on each All right, we have Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, your worship. Just to follow up on Counselor Volko's comment, in some respects, it's almost more appropriate that we did a mail drop on so many feet of either side of the pipeline rather than the media. I think the media is a waste of time, I think the, with all their respect. But I think the, so many feet on side of the pipeline is you're actually going to hit the affected individuals. I noticed on this issue, it sunk home even more for me when you actually saw the route and, and the fact that it's going through neighborhoods and going through creeks and valleys and, and parks. I mean, I know to the rest, to, to many people in the community, the concept of, of a pipeline going through North Burnaby somewhere was a bit abstract to people. Now there's a plan. There's actual route. There's a, there's a, a line that, that the pipeline is proposed to be built on that's going to impact people directly. And I think that in some respects, rather than waste money and time on members of the media who may or may not report it, that the affected individual should be given access to that. Seeing that, I think this is really a pathetic, sad situation when you consider that, you know, people like Mark Angelo and Alma Rudolph spent years building up the creeks and rivers on the Barnett system, the Stony Creek watershed. And city as, as a partner has gone in and bought property and created parklands along this corridor. A legacy that's lasted 60 years that could be ruined in five minutes with a burst and a burst of a pipeline. I, I think it's pathetic that, that we are being told what we have to do so that a Texas millionaire can build a, a, a pipeline to bring Alberta oil to Vancouver so that they can ship it to China and create greenhouse gases in a, in a year when we're supposed to be working to eliminate that. I, I think that it's, it's just a sad situation and I hope that between us and our partners in the community, that some sanity can be brought upon the National Energy Board and that this thing actually doesn't get built because I think we're all going to regret it for many years.
Counselor Daliwah.
Thank you, your worship. I, I have in the last couple of weeks received a couple of neighborhood letters, your worship, from average citizen. In fact, the, the person who did this work, Mr. Lauren Iverson, lives in the area. Once this fact has become known that this is now coming for sure because we did know the city had tried its best, wasn't able to stop NEB. They know what's behind NEB, it's a big money and it's coming. And people have become quite concerned. So I can see some anxiety and part of, of the, of the neighborhood which lives in, in close to the, the terminus now, knowing that there are going to be a lot more tanks added. It's really caused, it's causing a fair amount of anxiety. So there are two things at play. One, suddenly people recognize that there's, a route has been published. Not everyone knows, not everyone knows how close they are. Yes, NEB has sent letters to the, to the owners. But, but if you're only 50 feet away from where the pipeline is going to go, you don't know anything about it. There's no obligation on part of NEB to inform the neighbors, neighboring properties. We have, we change a little bit, we have to at least inform people within 100 feet when we even change just the land use. But this is atrocious in a way to say, well, people will find out. And yes, I seen some ads, I seen the ad in Burnaby Now. And, and you know, I hate to say it, not everybody reads Burnaby Now. Not everybody gets Burnaby Now. Not everybody pays attention to vary this very, almost illegible map that we saw.
Breaking hearts out there, Counselor Daliwah.
It, it is an issue and I, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, first of all, just sending that neighborhood letter in the area, which people have received. And, and certainly that, that gives a little bit more awareness. But it, it, I, it doesn't make sense that, that there would be no requirement on NEB's part to make sure that people who could be potentially affected aren't even informed. So this, this isn't over, even though we know we, what we tried to work with the, with, with our courts and to see this is a larger impact on the community and we needed to have a voice. And we continue to get that stonewalled by, by the courts at NEB. But suddenly it seems to be that we, we have pretty well, they're ready to bring the bulldozers now to start digging because they, that's how they're acting. Here's the route, this is your property and we're coming in and just go ahead and we'll go put that pipeline right through. So there's a fair amount of a concern in North Burnaby. In fact, I think right throughout Burnaby and out of Burnaby, all the way through the pipeline where the, where the route's going, going. But I would like to see us continue as a city to perhaps, from the staff's perspective, if, if we find that people are going to need help in terms of really following the statement of opposition, your worship. Not everyone, it, it's not as easy as, as was made clear in our, in our letter, that perhaps a lot more information is needed for people to even follow how we do this. If this is their last opportunity to really show opposition at the grassroots level, I, I would suggest that, that we might make some, some staff time available and people call. And I believe there is already a contact number. But, but if, if there is no other way to do, to inform people that there's still a few days to left to do this one, and perhaps we might want to do something, your worship, maybe another press release with this report, that we are putting this report on the, on, on our website, as Counsel, Counsel Volko was saying. This needs to really be expanded, this information. There's a lot of information in this report, your worship, which points out what people can do. So I would like to see if there's anything you can work with the staff to do, that would be helpful, your worship.
Thank you. And Counselor Daliwah, I'll just say that anybody who thinks that the only people who are affected by a pipeline are the people who have it directly going through their property, ask the Westridge residents how that worked. You know, ask the Westridge residents whether they wanted to know about a pipeline that went through somebody else's property. Because if that pipeline breaks, everybody's affected. Everybody in that neighborhood is affected and the city is affected if it happens anywhere on any property. Because we're the ones who are tasked with looking after the rivers and streams that are so important to the character of our city. So, you know, I, I defy someone to say, and, and the National Energy Board apparently under their act thinks the only thing necessary is to notify exactly the landowner that this is going through. And it shows you how disconnected they are from urban areas. You know, that's fine when you're going through northern Alberta, but it's a whole different story when you're going through a city and they have never been able to get their head around the reality of this pipeline going right through an urban area. And I guess that's because they're in Calgary and they just don't care. Counselor Jordan.
Thank you very much, your worship. And I've said thank you to Deepak on many occasions, but thank you also to Karen, who's done a lot of the work. And I, I'm really appreciative that they distributed this information directly to the, the neighborhood residents, as Counselor Daliwah said, we're required. And we get complained at all the time because we haven't like told this whole city that we're changing one, you know, little, little corner, right? And as you say, they only told people whose property they're directly crossing. So if you're in the whole Meadowwood neighborhood, didn't even know it was coming. Might have suspected, but didn't even know that the pipeline was going to go right, right behind your house. So, because it wasn't crossing your direct property. So the last Community Development Committee meeting, we had a presentation from a whole group of citizens who've been working for some time because of the Brunette River Conservation Area. They want us to expand this green, this map here. They want us to take this whole green area and make it a park forever. They're from Citizens of Burnaby and New Westminster and Coquitlam and people who use that green space all the time. So didn't anybody tell them, oh, by the way, there's going to be a 10 meter wide clearcut through the middle of the conservation area and, and a pipeline down the middle of it? Hello? Did they get a chance to comment? These people have been working, saving, going through this, you know, green area that even part of it isn't even a conservation area at this time, right? So, but where did they get to comment to the National Energy Board? Because no one knew it was going there until the sign came out. These, she, routes came out. So I guess this does dispel the, the thinking, that the thinking that this is just twinning an existing pipeline. Because remember, you heard that all the way along, what's the matter with those crazy people in Burnaby? There was already got a pipeline, they're just putting another one alongside. Well, it's like about a half an inch on the map that's twinned. And then the whole rest of the map is a complete new route, including under the mountain. And yes, it's going under the mountain, but there'll be a 10 meter strip across the mountain so that you can get at work under the mountain in case something crazy happens, right? So, so it's the same. They may as well lay it on top of the mountain. What's the, what's the difference? I don't, it's just, it's all crazy. It's all, all totally crazy. But anyway, so the twinning myth is now forever dead, I hope, that this is not twinning an existing pipeline. This is a whole new pipeline going right through the middle of our city, through, through just about every park that they could find, is the way it looks to me. Cottonwood Park, we may as well like decommission it now because it's totally useless. You want your kids' playground to be on top of the pipeline right next door to a already existing airline? right next door to a already existing, uh, airline fuel pipeline? So there's not much left room in there for any kind of actual park activities, so, I don't know, I could go on, but it's just so frustrating. But I really appreciate, you know, the work everybody, um, here has done and continues to do. I know there's legal things still going on and, you know, we keep pressing forward, but pretty clearly from this, so do they. They have some pretty big guns on their side.
Apparently they've got the Prime Minister on their side, so I, uh-
Starting there, yeah.
Yeah, starting with the Prime Minister and, uh, can you imagine though that if they tunnel through the mountain and then cut, uh, a 30 foot swath through the forest?
All the way across.
All the way, that would be insane. What's the point of tunneling through the mountain if you're going to cut a 30 foot swath through the forested area? They can't be planning to do that. I, like apparently they can do it legally, they can't be planning to do that. I mean-
That's what it sounded like to me. Because they have to have access to it in case, you know, there's an earthquake, that never happens, and their concrete tunnel cracks, they have to have a way to get at it, so that would be how they get at it, the easement across the mountain.
Yeah, one would have thought we could have asked these questions during the hearings, but-
Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, right. They weren't, they weren't telling us the route during the hearing, so-
No, they didn't tell us.
That was kind of pointless to ask about that, wasn't it?
Anyway, enough, I support the recommendation.
Thank you, and-
Oh, maybe could we send a copy to those lovely people who want to preserve the, the whole Brunette River Conservation Area, perhaps they'd like to make a submission to this too.
Well, why don't, uh, why don't you give us a list? I mean, I'm happy to distribute the report thoroughly and, uh, and my office will, will do whatever you want, if you want to contact us and let us know. We'll make sure this gets out to all of those groups and, you know, we're, we're looking for an opportunity to widely distribute it.
What's the final date that we're allowed? 30 days till May, April?
It's over.
It's over?
Private land.
But they, people could comment on our land? Okay.
They can continue to comment, and I suspect they will, but there was a 30 day window. It was kind of a surprise, and that's the way they work at the National Energy Board. But remember, they got the support of the Prime Minister and that's all you really need, isn't it? All right, Counselor Calendino.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and some of my comments were like what has already been said, but, um, I, I think what has happened here, that some of the residents that have lived near the existing pipeline and haven't been bothered by them, they were kind of slipping at the wheel because they didn't think it was going to bother them, they're going to be twinning it, it's not going to touch me, it hasn't touched me for the last 50 years, why would it bother me? But as we just said, uh, it is not twinning of the pipeline, it's totally a new route that's going to affect new residents in the community, plus a lot of our public lands, and it's going to be very destructive in that it will take away a lot of vegetation in our community, even along the streams where vegetation neither more than anywhere else because it protects the fish in the summer when it gets very hot and it shades the streams and the, and the fish can survive in the water when it warms up. But, uh, what you and Counsel Corrigan just mentioned above regarding the route under the mountain on Burnaby Mountain, I'm assuming that if they're going to bore a tunnel, it's not going to be near the surface, that some places will be four, 500 feet deep. So I, I ask what is the necessity of clearing a swath of 10 meters of forest on the surface when the pipeline is some 500 feet below? You can't really access in an hour if anything happens underneath there, well, they will have to go somewhere through the tunnel to access it or turn off the valve at, uh, wherever it is, a kilometer or two kilometers before the, the tunnel. It's ridiculous that they should destroy our conservation area on Burnaby Mountain just so they can see the direction of their pipeline that they can not access if anything happens in the pipeline inside the tunnel. It's just ridiculous. And that's one of the points we should make very clear, that it's unnecessary to destroy the forested conservation area on Burnaby Mountain just to know the direction of the, uh, of the pipeline. I'm sure they will have it in their design and if they need to, uh, access, they'll have to access it through their tunnel and turn off the flow of the dilbit in the tunnel whenever anything may happen there. So we should really make a strong case that we, they don't need to clear, uh, the pathway in the direction of the underground pipeline in Burnaby Mountain if it ever may happen. If it's 500 feet underground, they can't access from above.
The question is that-
Yeah, well, it says that, I know it says that. I'm, I'm questioning, why is it necessary to do it?
I, um, I, uh, I do appreciate the work staff has done very, very quickly, Mr. Chu, in regard to produce this report at all. I mean, it's always layered on top of all of the other work that we've got. I want to just put, uh, pay to the old rubric, and I get this on the occasional letter that comes into me or email, usually from somebody in Alberta. But as long as, as long as you're using oil, how dare you criticize this pipeline? And I can tell you, the one place that isn't going to get any oil is the Chevron refinery, the refinery here in Burnaby, is none of this oil is destined for Canadian use at all. This is all oil for export and we're still going to have trucks and trains bringing oil right alongside the pipeline to arrive at the Chevron refinery. Now that is the absurdity of all of this. I'm getting lectured from people in Alberta about the importance of Canadians having access to oil, when in reality, none of this is for use by Canadians or they'd refine it in Alberta. But the reality is, this is all crude oil being sent overseas to access either the American or Chinese market, and I suspect the vast magnitude of it will be into the Chinese market. So this isn't about Canadians and their thirst for oil. This is all about sending this oil somewhere else where you, you can think you can get a higher price for it because it will be refined under lesser environmental standards. They know that, and that's exactly what they're doing. And the reason they're not refining it in Alberta, because our environmental standards are too high and it would cost too much to refine that oil here in Canada for us to have energy self-sufficiency. So I think all of us would say, well, gosh, if we're going to become energy self-sufficient as a result of the tar sands oil, this is all going to be used in Canada, refined in Alberta. People would be applauding and saying, well, isn't this a wonderful idea? We're not going to have to import oil from Saudi Arabia anymore, from some tyrannical dictatorship. We're not going to have to get that oil from them, we'll have Canadian oil to use. No, we're still importing it from the Saudi Arabians in trade for us sending them armored cars. So, you know, if, if only the reporting, you know, and we get good reporting from our local newspaper on this, but the reporting at the national level is, well, I think the only word to describe it is pathetic, in the sense that they're bought and paid for, they listen to those oil lobbyists, and they do not report the reality of the massive inequities in our energy policies and what we need to do to be able to develop a national strategy to protect our future in energy, is that we are not doing a good job of it. It is simply left to Houston billionaires to dictate Canadian energy policy. And I, that's, that's the part that really makes me angry about this, is this isn't the result of someone taking a bad consequence out of a good policy. This is someone taking a bad consequence out of a series of bad policies. You know, and that, that's why, you know, you could, you could eat being the one that's disadvantaged if you saw that there was really a Canadian interest being fulfilled. But when you discover out of all of this that there is no Canadian interest being fulfilled except the interests of multinational corporations and the jobs that some people are getting in the tar sands, it comes to the conclusion that this is not a Canadian public interest item. So, anyway, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried. I'm sorry, Counsel Calendino, a rant, but it's just so frustrating to me.
Some bengal oil that's been carried.
Oh, no, it's bitumen, yeah.
Yeah.
Item two, Freedom of Information Bylaw. Thank you, this is for us to come into the, uh, same approach that's being taken in other municipalities, we have the city clerk as we now have the, uh, the city manager. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried.
Moved and seconded, and this is to seek approval to bring forward a local service tax bylaw to impose parcel taxes for local improvement works completed between June 4th, 2016 and December 31st, 2016. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item four. This is to request approval of the 2017-18 Facility Use Fee Schedule. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. This is to request council authorized staff to bring down a bylaw to appropriate $601,869 inclusive of GST from capital reserves to finance five projects. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed and carried. This is to request approval for the road closure for the Giro de Burnaby and approval to maintain the current practice of depositing surplus Giro donations in a reserve for future Giro events. Counselor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship, and the second recommendation impressed me. I didn't realize that we could make a profit on, uh, having spun, people sponsor the, the Giro and, and to keep for future events. I know the last year I managed to get a few more sponsors, but I thought I was doing that so we can keep the race going, but I'm glad to see that there may be some surplus that can be put in account for rainy days. Um, y, your worship, uh, the Giro obviously is part of BC Super Week, which comprises one, two, three, four, five, six, seven races, it lasts about 10 days in the Greater Vancouver area, and it has become one of the richest purses in cycling in North America, if not the largest. And the Giro has become one of the more prominent, uh, criterion races of the, uh, uh, Super Week in Vancouver, in Greater Vancouver. Um, we have a very generous sponsor that's been there for the last, uh, four years, including this coming year, APY Development, and I hope that it will continue as long as the, as the solar development is going on in the Brandeau area, it'll probably be with us, and we'll be looking at other sponsors in the future. Um, the date of the Giro is obviously on, uh, July 13th and, uh, it goes from, the races are actually started at 6 o'clock for the women and 7 o'clock for the men, but what's not in the report is that, that before the race starts, there, there are events for young children at Confederation, which is a safety, uh, courses for, um, under five year olds and, and even an obst诞course for enjoyment. And it's, it's a family and children event that it's very popular. I've been there the last couple of years and there are dozens and dozens of families and hundreds of children that have a great time. And there's also, last year for the first time, there was also a pre-race of teenagers that took place, uh, and that was also very popular and hopefully we'll be having that again this year. It's an enjoyable event and I, uh, hope most of our council will be there and, and staff to enjoy the evening, have a dinner on the heights and, uh, come to the reception of the people at this table and the ones that will get invited. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, it's interesting, isn't it, that Port Coquitlam and New Westminster have, uh, followed in with their own, uh, events? So it's become, uh, widely enjoyed right across the lower mainland, and I agree, it's, uh, it's grown more than I, I thought it would. Uh, it has become very, very popular and we're building bigger and bigger crowds up on the heights.
We are, and I'm sure other communities will come in in the coming years for their own races.
Well, it's great for cycling, it really is. It's, uh, it's a great opportunity because these young cyclists have to support themselves while they're, uh, preparing to race internationally on behalf of their countries and, uh, and being able to do this right here in North America is a big advantage for them. So I congratulate all the volunteers who continue to support this event. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item seven.
This is to provide council with information regarding the partnership with Simon Fraser University to facilitate the Burnaby Festival of Learning. Counselor McDonnell.
If this chair of the commission, uh, we discussed this at the last meeting, and a couple of things I wanted to highlight was that Simon Fraser's uni, Simon Fraser University contributions is that they're hiring the full-time coordinator, uh, for events, marketing and coordination position, and logistics and administration, coordination and support, coordination and funding for the festival promotion activity and materials, including brand creation, website hosting creation and maintenance of the festival site and host the closing ceremonies. It's building a strong, it helps us celebrate the relationship between Simon Fraser and ourselves, and it also showcased many opportunities that Simon Fraser and Burnaby's offering for learning in the community engagement. There's a total of 36 events, uh, uh, being, being done during this, uh, process, but 26 of them are going to be held right here in Burnaby. So I think it's a benefit to Burnaby and, uh, we are supplying some facilities that they can use during the time and in consultation with staff, they said that they, uh, it wouldn't impact on what we're doing for services there, so it started out in Cork Island, our homeland there, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, it's been going there for 10 years, so I think we'll see this one's growing stronger each year as it, it grows. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great, uh, it's a great collaboration between the, uh, school board, the university, our Parks and Rec Commission and our, uh, our Burnaby libraries. So it, uh, it really does bring everybody together, great program. Counselor Calendino.
But, uh, these are all events that, uh, normally take place in our libraries and in our parks and recreation, and I think this is a good way of highlighting that we have all these community events that people can take, uh, take part of.
Yep, I think it's another opportunity for people to get out and enjoy the great facilities they've built over the course of many years. Right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item eight. Is a road closure on Remy Street. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item nine.
This is to obtain council authority for city staff and/or agents to enter into the property at 7647 Willard Street in order to bring the property into compliance with the Burnaby Unsightly Premises Bylaw. And, uh, just to mention is that for those people out there who have been complaining bitterly about the state of that land, uh, while we've been unable to contact the owner is that I understand now the property has been sold and there is a new owner and the new owner has been in to work cooperatively with our staff. We still are, uh, passing this ability to be able to do this, but hopefully it won't have to be exercised. So we've had some promising news and, uh, the most important thing is to get this resolved for the residents in that area of Burnaby. So with that, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried. This is, uh, to provide council with information on construction activity as reflected in the building permits that have been issued for the subject period of March 1st to March 31st. Counselor Calendino.
Yeah, your worship, uh, just to point out that, you know, we get criticism, we have in too many high rises around the city, but looking at the developments, uh, I must point out that, uh, the, um, largest indicator of construction in Burnaby is still the single family houses, and it's almost a two to one to multifamily, at least for this month and now up to the, up to now. So the single family house is not exactly to disappear in Burnaby yet. Yeah, that's right, this is, yeah.
Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item 11. This is to obtain council approval to award a contract for, uh, the 2017 Combined Sewer Separation Program, Trinity and Yale Lanes. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Motion to rise and report. All those in favor, opposed, carried.